Thank you. I'm going to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Jacqueline Robbins, a graduate and retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. David Bigsby, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And April Dennis, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We're going to begin with a proclamation, School Administration Appreciation Day, which is November 3rd, 2022. School administrators, the leaders of public schools, have had a positive impact on students, staff, parents, and members of the community at large. School administrators energize students and staff, respond to student needs, empower others, and recognize and celebrate achievement. School administrators, whether they work directly in a school building or at the district level, share the common goal of providing the foundation, environment, and professional learning community in which all students can learn and learn well. School administrators are entrusted with the well-being of our community's most precious members, the children. The administrators of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Students, parents, staff, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to provide children the five-star quality education program. To honor the administrative staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, the children, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education, on behalf of the Board of Education, express our deepest gratitude to our administrators and proclaim November 3rd, 2022 as School Administrator Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. And I make that motion if I get a second, second from Mr. Crabtranny discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, votes, and that is carried. Thank you.
We have several administrators here tonight, and I'm going to start with our directors. And would John Rice come forward? And I was going to have John Rice accept on behalf of all directors, but I do have two other directors present. So I think I'm going to have them come up as well. It might be easier if you could take those out. John will be able, so on behalf of directors, John, we want to thank you. If you can give John one of those.
Oh, thank you. Am I accepting on behalf of the members?
Yes, you are. Thank you, John. And on behalf of the principals, I have Tina Shmaluski and Emily LaFountain, if you can come forward. Thank you. And we do have three other members that I'm going to surprise right now. So I'd like to give one to Mr. Don Keegan and then Mr. Jason Nephew and also Chris Leahy because. Thank you, everyone.
I just pulled one on his table there. I thought he could read that later. Thank you. Here we have a Capital Project presentation, Mr. Keegan, if you want to introduce who you have here and take that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Take it over here, but let me at least pull the presentation up. Well, good evening. Thanks for having us back again. We're excited to share a little bit more information tonight about the upcoming vote on another potential Capital Project series. Go to the next slide, Don. He's still setting things up. Yes, I believe it is. All right, so we shared this a couple of weeks ago. I just want to reiterate, in the past couple of years, we've had several votes. We are currently accelerating some of the work that we had planned to bring to the table in 2023. Primarily safety and security work, some HVAC work at Gillette Road and some repairs at Main Street and at the North Syracuse Early Ed Program, and potentially some site work at Gillette. If you'll take a note up there, we do have a lot more work to do coming up. So when we get to the end of the presentation, we start talking about the financials, just keep that in mind, there's a lot more to do, okay? And the next slide, this just kind of presents things in a different way. So you can kind of see the 21, 22 in a kind of a blue-gray up there. Some of the work that we've already got on the books that's going to be completed in the near future. And when I say near future, it takes several years for these things to occur. We've got the EPC project, we've got the proposed work ahead of us now, and then work in 2023 and 2025 for those referendum votes. And there's still a huge chunk of work we are not getting to yet, okay? So it's a lot of big numbers, it's a lot going on, but we're really excited to see the change in the district as we move forward, okay? And I'm gonna let Kirk take over and talk about the individual project.
All right, so last time, just two weeks ago, we promised you that we would get you numbers, and here we are. So after a lot of work on many people's part, what we want to do is break down the components of the work into the way that we approach the project. Remember last time, we talked about the potential of different propositions? We'll get into that in just a second, but we basically broke the scope of work into these three key areas. The first part, the most critical of them is the safety and security measure, which was all lumped together, which is district-wide. I just want to point out that this includes, and I'll get into the particulars of each of these projects in just a second, but the safety and security work is work that's going to be ongoing at every building, except for the buildings that are currently under design, which will include Cicero Elementary and Lake Shore Elementary. The rest of the buildings, for the most part, are getting a little bit of work, depending on their state, and then a lot of work in other cases. So that's the safety, security project. So that came out at 32 million. We've rounded these numbers up so that they're more manageable in terms of how we propose this to the voters. The other component is Gillette Road Middle School and Main Street infrastructure pieces. And that came in at 21,200. And then we have the Gillette Road Middle School site work, which we'll see in just a second, which is 8 million. So if we add all of those components up, we end up with a proposed proposition of around 61.2 million. So as we mentioned last time, nothing's changed on the scope of work, but the safety and security measures, as we talked about last time, include coming up with a consistent entry point so that all of those sequences at all the buildings are uniform in terms of accessibility to a secure vestibule, as well as drop-off boxes and, you know, check-in procedures, security film, campus notification, PA system, the fire alarm upgrades, exterior signage to label all of the classroom rooms themselves on the exterior, as well as the entries and exits, and then the two-way backup radio system for that, as well as the keying systems, wayfinding, which has to do with the signage piece, and then upgrades to doors and hardware everywhere. So these are all the components kind of listed out with their key elements. These will all be part of all the projects at all the buildings. The Gillette Road Middle School infrastructure work really focuses on the HVAC upgrades, particularly the air conditioning system itself. And then at Main Street, the two items that we talked about, which have not changed, which is the recoding of the roof and then the water main piece, which is well beyond its useful life. And then last but not least, the last component is the site work component at Gillette Road Middle School, which includes the multipurpose field and the baseball field, as well as the loop walk and any of the gray areas that are upgrades for accessibility for the sidewalks and pad areas, as well as the resurfacing of both the A and B lots for the spectators. So that is the component of work in this. And then next slide, because this question, I think, was brought up by Matt. We wanted to make sure we addressed this. So the useful life of synthetic turf, and this has been true for about the last decade, based on the new technology with the turf is going to be about 12 years from a warranty standpoint, but the life expectancy itself is going to be 15 years, which is a requirement of the State Education Department. So no different than any of the turf that we've done in the district, including the stadium at CNS. These are the same numbers and the same types of systems that will be part of the new proposed turf anywhere that we're going to be working on, but particularly with the Gillette Road multipurpose field project. The other question that was raised was about natural grass maintenance versus synthetic turf. Usually, we break this down by showing kind of a per-place standpoint, but because the fields, particularly at Gillette, are so often used now even in poor condition, that was a difficult thing to do. So what we wanted to do is just throw the numbers out in terms of the actual cost for maintaining natural grass versus synthetic turf, which is going to always be in about the three to four times range. Really, with natural grass, there's a series of not only fertilizing, but watering and tining and top dressing, and it's a constant expense that you're going to go through every year. And what we didn't add into this is the increased cost, particularly at Gillette, because of the poor drainage issues and the water problems that we have. Now, the best part about the synthetic turf piece is the playability and the fact you'll be able to use those throughout the year for the most part, and that the most that you're going to have to do with that is exactly as it's termed here, which is the grooming once a month, which you'll have a machine to do that with, and then a deep clean one to two times per year, and then, you know, whatever debris pickup that you might have to do, and that'd be true of any turf anywhere. Any questions on the project scope itself? Great, I'm going to turn it over to Don, who's going to dive into the numbers.
So first, let me say thank you to King and King and Fiscal Advisors for helping us pull the numbers together. And, you know, Matt has been working closely with them on the scope of the work. But the number crunching was frankly better news than we expected. So as Kirk has told you, it's $61.2 million worth of work. The work will be financed over 15 years in accordance with SED requirements. And the good news is building aid is going to cover most of the project costs. We also have the advantage, and I just want to remind everybody that we've done so many projects over the years, and each of those projects are independently financed. And over time, debt drops off. We pay off the mortgage, so to speak, on one project, and it creates some capacity. So one of the things that our partners at Fiscal Advisors look at is they look at debt service reductions due to normal schedule lammertization, and we're able to offset a significant amount of local share associated with these projects with the drop-off of, you know, debt service. So that minimizes the tax impact. So when all said and done, when you consider the state aid and you consider the changes in debt service, the tax impact on this project would be 0.41% or $9 on a home valued at $100,000. Again, before star, as I always say, we don't consider the benefits of star in any of these calculations. So that's the.
Go on.
Yeah.
Usually, you break it down for each proposition.
So this is going to be one single proposition. Thank you for saying that. We were remiss in telling you that. So I want to go back, if you don't mind, to humor me for a minute, I'll slip back to our proposed work. When we originally started putting this together, we were a little nervous about what the tax implications were going to be of these various components. And very candidly, we didn't have any final analysis of the debt service reduction. And so we originally were thinking about structuring this much like we did the pool, where you couldn't vote yes on the pool unless you voted yes on the core work. When we looked at this work and we looked at the tax impact being 0.41%, we thought it made sense to just propose them all together. I don't think it necess, again, in order for the pool to pass, you had to pass everything else. So in this particular case, you know, we're just putting everything together because it doesn't have quite that high tax impact.
Everything goes.
Everything goes.
If it's defeated.
Then nothing goes. I, can I say this, and we've had Dan forgive me, and if I'm speaking out of school here. If this does, doesn't pass, we'll have to regroup and look at, you know, how we consider these. We think, in all fairness to our baseball community, they have a field that doesn't rain very well. And we've had, we've had some challenges. You, I can't speak, you know, any more eloquently than Matt and Kirk have done relative to the safety and security measures. And we all know that Gillette Road Middle School is our only non-air-conditioned middle school, and it prevents us really from using that facility effectively in the summer. And it gets pretty uncomfortable in there in June and September with the rising temperatures that we've been experiencing. So we'd have to just, you know, revisit everything if it fails. But with a 0.41% increase or $9 on a $100,000 home, we feel like this is a reasonable request, given the nature and urgency of the work. And we'll see what the tax, more most importantly, we'll see what the taxpayers say. So this is the actual proposition we put in front of the taxpayers. It spikes out very clearly the nature of the Gillette Road work, including the artificial turf. We didn't want to, we didn't want to, we wanted to be very clear about that in the proposition. Talks about the work at the junior high and the early education program, and then obviously all the security improvements to buildings. And it, it's comprehensive enough that it covers all the work that we've just described to you and asking the voters to support $61.2 million of work and the related tax impact as described. The timeline, so if, you know, we, you know, we came here on the 3rd and presented the project to you, and we, tonight, we're here with the, with the financial implications. We plan on doing the majority of the community communications in the month of November with a public hearing. We wanted to just throw this out to you. We say here mid to late November. We've kind of looked at our calendars, and we like November 29th. That is the same night we're going to do voter registration. And it's, you know, it's the same approximate time we've done hearings before votes in the past. It also gets us off of Thanksgiving week, which we thought would be a troubling week to do it. And so we've talked to Jill, and Jill has included that. And later in the evening, you're going to have a request to approve the specific language of the proposition. And in there, we've included the 29th as the date. So if, if the board has no objection, reflect on that, and in moments, you'll have a chance to vote on it. The referendum itself would be December 6th. They would begin, we'd obviously be focused on getting these submissions into SED for the safety and security work in December of '23, so that's a year away. But that's how long it takes to get, to get all the design work. It's a lot of properties, a lot of places we're touching. And we'd hope that we would get the project started in the fall of '24. For the Gillette Road and Main Street infrastructure and site work, we'd be looking at SED submission a year later, December of '24, with the start of construction in the fall of '25. And again, given all the work we currently have in progress, this is the best timeline, best estimate of what that timeline would be. One of the things that, that came up, I don't know if you guys are aware, this Wednesday, if the vote is, if the board votes on this tonight and approves it, this Wednesday, we have a community information session. And we would like to, again, subject to your approval, include that in the agenda and just start to talk about this right away with the community. Any thoughts on that timing? No? Okay. Any other questions and answer, questions regarding the propositions that we put in front of you?
I actually do have a question for you. Bed raising rates at unlimited number at this point. You're mentioning that the tax is going to pay for that, the interest of the loan, but that's an unknown number.
Yeah, well, one of the things that's nice about the way state ed gives us the state aid, they, they cover the interest expense. So the state aid adjusts for the debt financing costs. So, you know, we're, we're, we're pretty confident. We've built in, if you've seen us propose projects recently, we've built in contingencies and escalations. And so we believe we've got a good handle on what the tax impact will be and the total cost of the project as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for that. I mean, since facilities and the meeting, the last presentation and the number crunching, I was pleased with the 41 basis point impact. And he did reach out to get my opinion on putting together as one proposition opposed to three, and I thought it, 41 basis points, it made sense to go as one. So I'm pleased with that. I just, you know, I know the climate's not ideal, but I think we can promote this correctly or properly, and it's certainly, certainly worked as necessary. And the safety piece speaks for itself. So thank you. Other comments, questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Now, we have a special presentation from Mr. London, who would be next on our professional development and other things. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Board of Education. It's great to come back and share with you about a few different areas here. So as Mr. Farfali said, I'm going to share with you about three different things, our professional development work over the course of the summer and into the fall, as well as our World Languages Department and some of the work that's going on there. And finally, our English as a New Language program. As you can see from the slideshow document that was included in the board packet, my intent was to give you the full notes so you could read a little bit in more detail on your own. I won't share and go through every bullet there, but I wanted to hit some of the highlights for you. Really excited about all three of these areas. There's been a lot going on. There's been a learning curve for myself in some of these areas, for sure, but some really great, great things happening. So as we look at, first of all, summer professional development, there was a lot happening in the district. A couple of things I liked to highlight was our most recent new offering, Nice Skate put together over 30 online sessions that they offered to us as a district. And we kind of took a chance on this to see how it worked out, and some of them were three hours, some were 10 hours, 12 hours, all different topics. There was everything from technology tools to ENL to social emotional learning. And we, as a district, as you can see, had more than 500 sessions that we completed over the summer, which for the first time out was very, very powerful. As a matter of fact, they're petitioning the state to let Nice Skate go forward with this program and continue it, as it was only for a couple of months over the summer. Some of the other pieces in there, mentioning the District Steering Committee. We had a collaborative training and work that went on around restorative practices, which, you know, brought NSCA members and administrative members together to get some training as a group to help improve our work. CKLA training, more than 200 participants completed that over the course of the summer. So again, very, very active. Some other pieces, restorative practices. And what I want to point out in all these bullets and all these items is the diversity of the model, the format, the topic, the different ways that it was done. So for instance, with restorative practices, there was individual work where folks took sessions voluntarily to learn more about it. There were buildings who took it on as an initiative themselves, and then there was some of the committee work, like District Steering Committee. So there's a lot of different ways that the work was done, not just different topics that we offered this summer. For new staff orientation, it's a three-day program where we saw more than 60 new staff members come in, and the feedback was incredibly positive. We covered so many different topics, everything from suicide prevention awareness to McKinney-Vento to APR work. They had time with their directors so that they could talk about their content areas specifically, as well as time with NSCA, time in their buildings. It was a real variety of, of topics that we covered. And it was great to have the three days. Our consultant teachers were really the driving force behind organizing that and facilitating it and really hosting the three days. Some great work was done there, and a great, great group of new staff we have coming in this year. And I'll highlight too, our mentor training there, we've kind of brought that back out. We haven't had mentor training in a couple of years. We had nearly 30 new mentors come through the training this year. And it was at 10 of the 11 buildings had representatives. So we've actually widened the scope of who is now qualified to be mentors in our building, which obviously we want to keep up on that as we have that high number of new staff coming in. So we had a really, really busy summer, and it's, it's continued right over into the fall. So those Nice Skate trainings have continued, they extended that to the end of September. We continue in all these other different areas, things like Learner's Edge, our BOSI's offerings, our in-house offerings with the, the tech coaches were, again, a big success. So wide variety of topic, model, format, and, and great success. Where we're going next, we want to make sure that we're closely monitoring the professional development so it's aligned to our new strategic plan. And we want to use the Community of Learning Professionals Committee to really monitor and shape our superintendent's day, our half-days, coordinate things very well so that all staff know what's available to them on the different days across the year. Shifting and moving into World Languages, which has been probably a steeper learning curve for me than this arrow represents. The primary message for me that I want to get across to you is that this is really work around standards, piloting, and e-doctrina. It's this alignment and congruence. There's a lot of things happening in the world of world languages right now. You can see that in 21, 22, new standards were approved at the state level. We jumped right in on that, and the department was very, very much immersed and embedded and engaged in learning what those new standards looked like. We actually had two of the state experts come and do some PD with us on a couple of half-days. These are SUNY professors in the World Language Department that work at the state level and developing the assessments, the standards. And we jumped right in and had some great firsthand learning. We also tried out a new end-of-the-year assessment with the Apple exam, and I'll share more about that or answer some questions about that if, if you have those toward the end. But the work across these five years, the state with adoption of new standards has basically given us a five-year window to say all of your curriculum, all of your assessments, all of your instruction needs to be aligned with the new standards. At the same time, this is the work we're trying to do with e-doctrina as a repository, as a system to organize all that. So what we did in 21, 22, and this past summer, where we took all of our curriculum hours, used the state's template for new unit planning, and we had nine different world language projects that were aligning units in their curriculum with the state template. So almost gave us a little head start on where we're going to go. Now we're going to start moving that over into e-doctrina across this year. At the same time, this is the first of the three years of a pilot program, where we'll start to explore resources and new programs. Next year, we'll do the pilot and then implementation the following year. So we have all these pieces coming together at the same timeline, which is actually perfect for the practice in what's happening in the classrooms. So again, a lot of details in your notes here about the specifics around this. The approach that I'm taking as a director of World Languages is we're going to align our curriculum work with the state's timeline of when your checkpoint work has to be completed. So you can see there in 2022, 23, we're going to work on checkpoint A resources being completed. That's because in '23, '24, the new checkpoint A exam and assessment is in place for the state. '23, '24, we'll work on everything for checkpoint B, because in '24, '25, the state wants us to be using the checkpoint B assessment. And so that by the end of their timeline, we have everything in order and aligned to the state's expectations.
Dave, can you just let the board know at what grade level checkpoint, checkpoint A happens and checkpoint B?
Sure, checkpoint A at the end of grade eight. Checkpoint B at the end of grade nine, I believe, and then checkpoint C at the end of grade 11. And then, of course, there's other courses outside of that, but those are the three that are required by the state. Couple of just additional pieces with that that are more around enrichment with the department. We continue to work very hard to increase our numbers with the seal of biliteracy and actually seal of triliteracy. So we've had an increase, slight increase, this year or this past year, over the year before, with the students completing that. Year before was very challenging because the entire. Year before was very challenging because the entire seal process was completely virtual and online. This past spring, we went back to doing it in person at BOSI's. And I'll tell you what, it was my first experience with it. It's an incredible experience to go down and see all these districts joining together. The students, I sat in on a few of the presentations and was really just amazed. I am, as I said, other than six months of French and junior high, that's about the extent of my world language knowledge. But I sat in on one of the presentations and I likened the students sharing with us kind of like an opera where you may not understand the language very well, but you know the story. And they're so fluent and they're so articulate in communicating that that you can kind of share in that experience, even if you don't know the language itself. So some amazing work done by our seal of by literacy students. And enrichment opportunities this year, we're starting to work on bringing back some of those. The field trips, there's a play downtown that's going to be in the target language in Spanish presented entirely in Spanish, and some of our classes are starting to arrange that. And you'll be seeing me come forward very soon with a request for a field trip to Montreal, because our French students are looking to once again bring that back. So again, a lot happening with world languages. Finally, with English as a New Language, the starting place for me in this part of the presentation is to thank you for your support. I know that I've come back to the board a number of times and we've been asking for a lot over the course of the past six months to a year. This is a really quickly changing landscape. And what I applaud you for and appreciate is our ability to be very proactive versus reactionary. And that's helped a great deal because the landscape has changed really quickly. So the way I organized this was to kind of give you some numbers, as you can see around these different areas. Our enrollment, it's tenfold increase in students over fifty, over seventeen years, going from twenty seven to two hundred and seventy. Our staff, you know, pending board approval with our newest E N L teacher tonight, that's going to be seventeen teachers. You see eighteen listed in the in that last slide only because we have a long term sub in right now for somebody who's out of maternity leave. And and it's just an incredible increase. And you look at the languages, twenty five reported primary languages in our district right now. So the diversity is quickly increasing. When you look at the enrollment trends, I've noted there that we're looking at things like the trend right now, this could quickly change. Right now, we're seeing Middle East countries and Southeast Asia are some of our primary new entrance. We're seeing a large increase in students that come in from out of country versus moving in from another district or another state. So a lot of students are coming in and many of those students are coming to us at at the entering level, which is level one out of the five proficiency levels. And and where that comes into play most significantly is we're talking students, we have two twenty year olds, two nineteen year olds that have come in and don't have any schooling background, because in some of these countries, gender plays a role in whether you ever had an experience in school. So imagine coming into our country, no schooling since you were ten, you're twenty years old, and where we what classes are we going to go in? How do we program for those students? Do we put them in chemistry? Do we put them in calculus? And they haven't even acquired the language yet. So your staffing increases have enabled us to make the program meet more of those needs, almost like a newcomer program. And very quickly, what I'll mention is newcomer program is where you you almost have the student immersed, pulled out of the classroom and immersed in just some basic language acquisition for months possibly, because you really just want them to get that initial survival language down. We don't have the staffing to pull somebody offline from supporting in the gen ed classrooms if we get a student in. Whereas some of the very large districts, Syracuse City, New York City, some of the other big ones have that much of a population where they can have devoted staff to that. Your increases have enabled us to start to create kind of like some parallel classes for some of these students or some parallel curriculum work with them and instructional work with them, because these trends are what happens in conjunction with that is these lower level students require more minutes of E N L services. So we may not have high numbers in a particular spot, but if they're all level one English language learners, their minutes are greatly increased. So the staffing piece there also talks about spreading E N L teachers across grade levels. If you have ten students that all get thirty six minutes a day, it's much easier scheduled than ten students that get seventy two minutes a day, or even two students that get seventy two minutes a day, because it's not the number of students, it's the number of minutes that they receive according to state regulations. So these lower level students coming in from out of country, especially with larger families, it's what's taxing our staffing. The other piece that plays a role in that is the scheduling, for instance, at the secondary level. We went from seventeen Ls at the junior high two years ago to over thirty right now. And for those students, if we only have one staff member there who's on a rotating schedule, there's only one English class at the eighth grade level for those Ls to be a part of in order for that teacher to get to the other kids on the other days for those minutes. So we ended up having a classroom of twenty three out of twenty eight students in the classroom were Ls at the beginning of this year. If we hadn't had that E N L staffing increase, that would have been a really detrimental instructional model for those students versus being able to increase the staffing to pull them out and service them in a couple of different classrooms. Couple of other pieces I just want to mention with that, our rocks program, Roxboro Road Elementary School. They have just done an amazing job of embracing this new program and they've been they've been excited about it. It's enabled us to return so many students to their homeschool. So even though this year the numbers are a little low than we anticipated because we gave the option for some students to stay at Smith Road, those numbers to have a third of our elementary E N L population at each of the three elementary schools puts us over seventy percent of our Ls district wide at their homeschool and actually close to eighty percent last time I checked. Our summer program is the second year for it. We worked in conjunction with Auburn. And we use a different set of materials, reading materials just for the summer program through a grant that Auburn provided for us. And what was exciting about this program is every student showed progress with literacy. Now, there was, like we mentioned there, and you can see in the notes, there's eighty four sublevels. So every student, at least in four weeks, four days a week, four hours a day, progressed to half of one sublevel, at least. That's a short period of time to see an English language or at the elementary level exhibit growth. And even though it wasn't a huge amount of growth, it was consistent across the program. It also, though, the program enabled us to do some new things, like we brought in pre-service E N L teachers from the colleges to help us out assisting with the E N L teachers to keep the student staff ratio a little bit lower, give them experience, hopefully create a pipeline for some of those teachers to come into our district if we keep expanding. So looking ahead, really, the the primary pieces, sorry, falling behind in the slideshow. Primary pieces are to look more into the newcomer program and how we address that need a little bit better and how we increase our parent support, because that's a key piece of these students having success is a time when they're not in school. We're doing a great job with them in school. As a matter of fact, I can tell you, just looking over some data this week, the nicest lot scores from this spring. Out of all the students that were in our district last spring and took the nicest slots, they all scored two or higher on the nicest lot. We had nobody scoring the one. So our staff is doing a great job with the Ls in district. We need to give our parents a little bit more support. We're doing that through some translation programs, through some evening events at the buildings, through more tools to communicate more clearly with them. And that's the focus, I think, moving forward this year is the newcomers and the parent support piece. Last slide, I just would be remiss if I didn't, you know, I'm the one sitting up here talking at you for hopefully less than fifteen minutes total. But these are the names of the faces that are behind all this work. And they're doing some 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 great work, some incredible things. We have a great deal of vertical alignment throughout these programs. We have a great deal of collaboration across these teams and throughout the building. So just couldn't be more proud of the work that they're all doing. The pieces that I've known about, even back as a building principal, but the new things that I'm learning as a director. It's been exciting past year and this year we're just moving forward full speed. So, thank you. I know it's quick and fast and a lot of information. Any questions that you'd like me to respond to or?
I got a bunch of questions.
Okay.
Okay, world language department, is that is that what the E N L district level wide department is? It called the world language department?
World languages is actually the new name for the foreign language department. So world languages is our Spanish and our French program, seven through twelve.
Okay, all right. I was confused on that. And then the English as a New Language instructional team. You mentioned that it goes by minutes. So is there any cap on like, okay, these kids get thirty six minutes or whatever, did these kids get the certain cap on the number of kids at the ratio for student and teacher?
Ironically, unlike special education, the regulations don't put a cap on in a gen ed classroom, you can't have more than fifty percent of students with disabilities. In in an E N L program, you could have up to one hundred percent of the students in the class being English language learners as long as the curriculum is general education curriculum. But it's not necessarily best practice and it's not best for English language acquisition for those students. As far as the minutes go, there's five levels of proficiency. And so the lowest two levels get seventy two minutes a day. The upper levels get thirty six minutes a day. Level five is considered commanding, so it's more of a consult basis. It's almost as you graduate out, but we monitor for two more years with a minimal number of minutes.
Okay.
Can answer the question.
Yeah, do you do, is there both a combination of push in and pull out for services?
Yes, for E N L pushing is called integrated, pull out is called standalone. And again, those, there's a, as well as the number of minutes, there's a combination of the standalone and the integrated time too. So if I'm a level two student proficiency wise, that seventy two minutes is a combination of some integrated, some standalone. Whereas if I'm a level one, it's all standalone with, you know, the minutes and the location change according to the proficiency levels as you progress. It is a release model to hope that we have those English language learners in the general education setting as much as possible and then release them from the standalone minutes as a progressive proficiency.
And just like what is my head's wrapping around this, especially with all the newcomers and the projection of the newcomers to come, I find a lot of times that the E N L teachers are almost acting as social workers for the families. I don't know if you find that too, but you know, the support we're finding, we've had an increase in the district I work in, we've had to increase E N L staff. And we're finding that a lot more is put upon them when the families are just coming new to the country and trying to figure that piece out. So I I'm just putting a, I don't know, a prop, whether a social worker or the needs of the E N L teachers, you know, change with that. And then I do have another question. I'm sorry, Bob, because I know you have questions too.
Yours are much better.
Oh, no, they're not. So my my other question is you do the professional development and this is more, I'm I'm thinking as far as the district that I come from, it's not cut and dry. So I'm wondering if it's cut and dry here for summer for for summer training, or let's just say during the year, a teacher's like get a book club going and it gets approved and they do like after hours work with professional development. Do, is it cut and dry on whether they get like hours, P D hours that eventually goes to a pay raise or whether they outright get paid for their time? How is that delineated?
It's a great question. So contractually, all staff in the district get twenty point four hours of voluntary P D, professional development that they choose to be a part of, that they get paid for. That professional development almost always also counts towards the one hundred C T L E hours that they have to log for the state. There are other professional development opportunities that we ask them to be a part of that they may not voluntarily chosen to take part of. And so we do different pay for that. What goes into base salary is that they take a graduate course and we have a process for that where they submit the credit hours and the transcript and then go through H R. And that increases their base salary. But annually, every staff has this twenty point four hour, it's equivalent twenty point four hours is the way it works out, where they can choose to be a part of technology training, they can be a part of a book club. We also have the opportunity for staff to actually propose professional development or some of that they want to lead and facilitate as well. Is that? So when you say cut and dry, there's a cut and dry line between when we require things and how we pay for that, when staff elect to take something and how we pay for that. What is extra pay versus base salary increase?
Yeah.
Those types of things. So.
Is that in the contract? Yeah, okay. Could I could I get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Now it'll be helpful for me and where where I am. There's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of confusion like where like, you know, what rises to what? So it would be really helpful that and that's the reason why why I ask.
Sure. I think for the most part, staff are are very clear on which things qualify for which. Sometimes we have some confusion about what qualifies for the C T L E hours, because those have to be from an approved state provider on the state list. But what is for the twenty point four hours and what is towards base salaries is pretty clear.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. We'll go over to Mr. Crabtree then.
I really didn't have any questions, but if I didn't ask one, Mr. Miss Val DeFloria would be upset. So.
I'd be disappointed, Mr. Crabtree.
At least one question. And my question is, where does technology fit in? I think I've heard you speak about students are able to hear their language with some of the work. So where does technology come into your English as a new language?
Okay, specific to the E N L program?
Yes.
So there's a few different things that are happening. We have some different translation tools that we're using, such as we've purchased Talking Points, which is it it acts like a Facebook Messenger, you know, as a platform. But when you say something into or type into it, the recipient receives it in their own language, they program in their language. Then when they communicate into it, it comes back to us in English so we can understand. So that's really good for text messaging or for emails. We have some other programs, like right now, we're developing this in Parent Square. I'm actually exploring Parent Square has the ability to do a lot of this translation much better than Google Translate did. Google Translate's the most easily accessible, but out of the programs we've looked at, it's the least accurate. It's more generalized, but it's very easy. So when we put out a smore, what we've done sometimes in the past year or so is we've accompanied that to our E N L families with a Talking Points message that says, please go to this link, click on the translate button to read this letter from Superintendent Bowles. And that goes out in their language because it's short, because what Talking Points can't do is a full length letter or translated PDF. We have a number of interpretation interpreter companies that we go through that we can translate documents. We've brought translators and interpreters into Zoom meetings. We brought them to parent teacher conferences. We brought them to C S E meetings. So we have the availability to do that. And we also have some new programs instructionally that we're exploring and starting to use such as Speak Agent, which is around academic vocabulary for Ls. Imagine learning. So a number of different, we're we're expanding very quickly in the platforms that we're using, both instructionally and homeschool communication. Am I hitting it or no? Okay. We actually, and very interesting, we actually explored last year a pocket talk device where it's really like a very small walkie talkie. It has over two hundred languages programmed into it and you can say something into it. And then you can press the other button in place to the person. So we we've tried two of those so that, for instance, when our nurses have a student come and they're sick and they can't communicate that very quickly, we don't want to supplant instruction. And I'm not going to turn around Mrs. Richmond and look at, because she was our, she was our one that actually tried it out for the very first time. And it came out of her classroom where a student needed to get on the bus and thought they were being picked up and there's confusion and we only had a minute or two to make a decision. Not enough time to get on the Chromebook, not enough time to interpret something through Google Translate. This device was helpful. So we're using that in some of our buildings too for quick, more emergency like communications. Lot happening, but it's evolving. Yeah.
I forgot to ask, do you have a dual, is there a dual language? Sorry, Pa. Is there a dual language program?
Yeah, we do not have any dual language programs in our district.
Okay.
But Amanda had a question.
I just had a comment, actually. I just wanted to say how important our world language program is as someone who is helping two teenagers figure out this whole college thing. The colleges, especially some of the more difficult ones to get into, really want the kids to have language for several years. And it's, I think our program's great and our teachers are great and I don't know, I'm just very thankful that we're doing a lot because it is important. So people that are whose kids might be looking to go to a four year school really do want to make sure, you know, the kids are going and getting the language, the biliteracy. It's amazing.
I think it's common across many districts that keeping these world language programs alive, healthy and robust is a challenge right now. And I can't say enough about the teachers we have seven through twelve that are just, they are working so hard to keep students engaged, interested, shifting the instruction to make it more engaging and authentic for them to to stay immersed in it and stay on that sequence, because they don't see until years down the road how valuable it is to those colleges. You're absolutely right. Yep.
Just one small question, because Beth piqued my curiosity on something you mentioned. When you start talking about compulsory versus voluntary professional development. And the case is something like the program that was piloted piloted last year, C K L A. You mentioned you had two hundred people in the summer get trained. Obviously, there's some target number, everybody's going to use it, so they have to get trained. Were we able to get those in and those professional development days at the beginning of the year? And if you have any loose ends, how do we address that? And lastly, Tata column, Shway Shwayman, Fali, Kamab, Mafi Fahim and Englaze. Which is talk slowly, please. I have trouble understanding English.
Okay.
Well, I thought you had your little walkie talk.
No, no, not on me, not on me. I was like, boy, he's really testing me for those interpretation devices now.
I would do Italian, but my dad only taught me bad words, so.
You you heard the part about six months of French and junior high, right? Yeah, that was. You know, for C K L A. You know, for C K L A, I'm going to look to Greg a little bit on this, only because I'm not sure the breakdown with those sessions that kind of finished out the year versus start of the year. But you know, but I checked in to see how many we've had complete that whole training. And so he would be better able to, I guess, address any of those ones that we didn't get and how we did that. But I'm pretty sure.
Can you, can you grab a microphone?
Yeah, that, that's exactly what I just wondered. Yeah. It's an easy one. Sure, you get the easy one.
So last I knew, I think just about every single person, teacher wise, so gen ed and specialized have gone through the C K L A training. I think we had one or two, for whatever reason, couldn't make it to both days, but our instructional coaches have been there to help support them. So every single teacher K four, other than one or two has gone through the full two days from the summer. And then we have another training coming up on November eighth.
Thank you. Sure.
I told you it was easy.
I, I, this is just a comment to, I was going to make it later, but you are here. On Election Day, November eighth, this building is the largest facility for voters in Anadota County. There are 7,400 registered voters here in this building. I'm hoping you will not use the junior high a major thing, because the parking is going to be unbelievable on that day. So just to, to let you know, this building and the junior high, because a former superintendent didn't do it. And we had people parked over to Applebee's. I do not want handicapped people doing that. So just to let you know.
I can assure you that November eighth does not include a district wide gathering in one building at the junior high. There will be some professional development offerings taking place within the building.
Well, just letting you know, the parking in this whole area is, you know, whether you early vote or not, is the largest in Anadota County.
And Bob, what we'll, what we'll do here is again, we will shift all parking from this building over away from the parking lot. We've parked in the lot in the junior high and we will get, I'll work with Don and Matt and get security to, to assist with the parking reissue.
One last easy question. Sorry.
It's fine. I just keep like, is the 12 to 15 minutes is what drives me and I'm okay with as many questions as you have.
I should know this and I don't. What languages do we offer?
Spanish and French.
Okay. I took LAN. Now it's in high school.
Where is, where is that spoken these days?
What's that?
The medical field?
Where Latin was spoken these days. Okay.
Nowhere.
I do have actually a quick question, which I'm pretty sure I know the answer to. A lot of work is done with the social emotional learning and kids going through quite a bit. Those with English is not their first language. When it comes to the stress of not knowing English and talking with their classmates, translation devices with social workers as well?
So we don't have them with every social worker. But that's actually, as I'm discovering and purchasing these new products through our Title III funds, we're expanding who's using them. So we've kind of gone out to the nurses. We've gone to the main offices because of supporting with the families. But you're right, we need to then take that next layer out to go to our mental health providers and make sure that they have the ability to connect with these students and communicate with them very clearly. We've done that in certain instances up at the high school, for instance. Sometimes we've had sensitive topics or we've had some more extreme topics. And so we've actually called in some interpreters for some of those situations as well. But yeah, the training of our staff around how to work with the language barrier is going to be critical over this next year too. Absolutely.
I can imagine the stress must be extra for the, for the kids as well. So glad you're looking into it.
Yeah. Yeah. I have been, I will say, very positively encouraged and impressed by the degree to which the student body in general and the staff, from what I've seen, have embraced this diversity in our district. Like I've, I've seen it enrich classrooms and buildings to the point where they, you know, it's become a real integral part of everything they celebrate, more than just celebrating holidays. It's become learning about other cultures. And so we're moving that direction, like to move a little quicker, you know, but we'll get there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. You probably didn't expect to be so popular, but thank you. Right. Our next, we have two B P Ts tonight and our first one up is going to be Lake Shore Road Elementary. So when you are ready, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, good to meet you everyone. I'm Tina Schimaleski, Principal at Lake Shore Road Elementary.
Can you grab one of the microphones?
Hello, I'm Tina Schimaleski, Principal at Lake Shore Road Elementary. Presenting with me tonight is Amy Malik, B P T Chair and A I S Teacher at Lake Shore. So this is all set up for us. Thank you. It's kind of a, sorry, split screen. Thank you. Still is. All right. Bear with me here. Okay. So again, welcome to Lake Shore Road Elementary. As you can see, our building demographics have changed a lot from last year to this year. We are down 196 students and that is because our Bear Road friends returned back to their home building. With that being said, we are also down 14 staff members, two of them A I S teachers included within that. We are down one C T D classroom. We have added a Bosi Skate Program. It's about 10 kindergartners, a new addition to our building. You can also see our free and reduced hasn't changed much over the last two years as far as transient population. We are keeping more in than are exiting our building. All right. And then you can just take a look at our vision and mission. I know you've seen that before. And then aligned with the district strategic plan, we are tackling the graduation rate by working to improve our attendance. So we did work with Lori Cook this year as well as other elementary principals. And we created an attendance flyer, which we did send out to all of our families during open house. And it was also a highlight during our kindergarten orientation as well, just to emphasize the importance of student attendance in our building. Each month, we also evaluate what students may need a check in, looking at unexcused absences for the month and something we are also looking at during our B P T meetings and sending home letters as well as our attendance matters letters going home as well. All right. Moving on to our second goal. Reading proficiency, I will hand that over to Amy.
Okay. So we are continuing to use our Ames Web Plus Universal Screener at all of our grade levels from kindergarten through grade four, which measures their beginning skills in September, right at the start of the school year. We have our data from last year, which shows in the fall, we had 33.6% of our entire student population in the green tier, which is reading proficiency. And by the time we were at the spring of that school year, it had grown to 47.8%. Again, that was last year with the combined buildings. This year, we started out the year just slightly lower than that at 32.2%. Starting off in the reading proficient range and our goal is to grow that population to 52% by the end of the school year. Some of the ways that we're working on meeting that goal. Oh, glasses back on, sorry, is the implementation of our new C K L A language program, which is going to strengthen our tier one instruction in the classroom by our classroom teachers. And we are very excited by the promise that that brings, starting out at tier one. We also are using tier two instruction time. The classroom teachers incorporating their win time as well as using our instructional TAs to work with small groups of students as well. And then of course, our A I S program, which services all of our students from kindergarten through grade four. We also have a special early literacy volunteer that works with kindergarten students selected by the classroom teachers. And he is there five days a week for the full day, working with children from all six of our kindergarten classrooms.
All right. And looking at goal number three, emotional competency, we use the B I M A S. And we are looking for overall improvement within the five tenants of emotional competency. The areas of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision making. So last year we had a total of 66%. This year we are looking to boost that to 75%. And you can see all of the programs and things we are working to boost this to 75%. Over the summer, we aligned our positivity project to the B I M A S tenants of emotional competency, and we planned the year out as far as what traits we want to use and when. We're also adding bimonthly schoolwide assemblies to introduce the skills and character traits. Another new thing that we developed this year was also, we have this Lake Shore Road Elementary pledge, which is hanging up in every classroom around the building. And it says, as a student of Lake Shore Road Elementary School, I am responsible, empathetic, aware of myself, cooperative and helpful today and every day. And then we used our L R E for learn, reach and excel. All right. In addition to that, looking at the bias, B I M A S, it came out of conversations within the building that we also wanted to improve academic functioning. So the areas of conduct are negative affect, cognitive attention, social and academic functioning. And we noticed the most red in the area of academic functioning. So last year we ended with 84% and this year we hope to bring that to 90%. Some of our strategies for that are making sure that teachers know their resources and interventions that they can use within the building. Students using a daily planner, regular communication with parents, again, monitoring the attendance, encouraging student leaders within the building and connecting with classmates during morning meeting and restorative circles. And also utilizing that win time for teaching students study skills and working on enrichment projects. You're okay.
In looking at our math goals, again, using the Ames Web Plus Universal Screener, last year's data shows that we began the year with 35.44% of our student population already in math proficiency skills for their grade level, which grew to 57.2% by the time we hit the spring of last year. This year, we actually started out the year slightly higher at 37% of our total population already green and proficient for their math skills. So our goal there is to bring it up to 62% by the end of the school year, using the Ames Web Benchmark in the fall, winter and spring to track that data.
And our math goals and strategies are?
Thank you. One of the reasons we feel the math is so strong this year is the teachers have had more time, years and experience with the Into Math Program as opposed to our C K L A program, which is brand new and we're all getting accustomed to that. So our teachers have had time to use that math workshop model in their classrooms. They're using common assessments that are taking place through their mastery connect program so that they're best able to meet the needs of their students across the whole grade level. And again, utilizing those instructional TAs that we have that can service students in reading and math to give some of that extra review and reteaching that might be needed during those win times. We also have math support during our A I S program as well.
All right. And that brings us to celebration. So we're certainly feeling that COVID is kind of in the past. It's been nice to have concerts again, school assemblies. We've got after school programs that have started up. One thing I mentioned earlier as part of our S E L is we created good news cards, which have student artwork as well as staff artwork. And we thought the best way to have our students highlighted is they created cards for each board member just to share something that they love about Lake Shore Road. So Amy's passing out those cards. You can hang them on your fridge and think of us. All right. At this point, we are at the end of our presentation. Do you have questions for us? Again, thank you for allowing us to come and celebrate our school with you.
I have questions. First of all, thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. My kids went to Lake Shore. It's like way down there, but I appreciate all the information. A couple of questions. At one point I used to have a Bosi Skate Program in the building. And I just thought it was so seamless and so wonderful. Are you finding the same thing? I was worried when I, when it, when the program first came in and, oh my gosh, the teacher, the program, everyone there was such a resource to us, and they were really like self-sufficient. Like I would go in and get to know the kids, but I never had to do, anyways, how's that going for you?
Yes, it, they are very self-sufficient. The principal and the teacher, you know, I work with them often. It was a new program. So again, they had to order materials and furniture and have that brought in. But they seem very happy in the space. I enjoy going in and visiting the students. And this week they are working on a project, which they are introducing their students to our school community. So that when the students see them in the hallway, they know how to best interact. Because currently they're not pushing into classrooms as of yet, but the goal is, you know, they'll work towards that right now. Like I said, they are mostly kindergartners.
We did, we did the same thing with them, you know, get to know, and then as they got to know teachers, work on what that would look like. So great. I'm, I'm glad that that's something that's going well. My other question is, I don't know whether it's to you or it's to district wide is the attendance letters. Is there a district wide attendance letter that goes out or does every school do their own individual letter?
There is a letter that we can access through school tool. I think we put our own little flavor on our attendance letter. So basically the letter that I send out gives the percentage of days that the students have missed school from that point. And then again, just bullet, these are the important reasons why we need your child in school. And if you need any support from us, please reach out. We're happy to help and work with you as a team.
I'll, I'll share, I'll tell you a, a small situation. We've had, you know, on a much slower scale, chronic absenteeism. And this year is a shout out to my superintendent. I showed him the letter that I sent out. Are you okay with this? He made a couple tweaks in the letter. And in all my years of being there, I've never had parents come in, sit down and meet with me and see this dramatic improvement in attendance. It's, it was kind of bold, but it got their attention. And I'll share it with Dan if he wants to, yeah, I don't want to do any micromanage. Just say, I've never seen such a, you know, Bob, you're laughing in my micromanaging and I don't mean to at all. Okay. All right. And that's who I'm learning from. Oh gosh. But at, at any rate, if you want to use it, if it could be of use, if not, I mean, no, whatever. But it was just so dramatic for me to see like, like they would call, like I would send out registered mail than regular mail. And I'm getting calls back, parents coming in. You know, a little bit upset, but going, I, I want your child here. That's all I'm asking. And to help them and you know, we get on the same page, but it, it's changed behavior. So I'll share it with you. Okay. All right. And again, thank you. We appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
I'd like Mr. Stone and Nick to get together and do a presentation on the New York State test. I want to see what grades three through eight performed last year. I kind of know Nick showed me where North Syracuse real quickly one day, but I'd like to see, I'm seeing all the test results, which are wonderful. But I want to see how we perform throughout New York State. Thank you.
Very quick comment. This was adorable. Thank you very much for getting this, having the kids do this for us.
You're welcome.
We have a spirit coming with our new leopard heart.
Yeah. So whoever ended up with the heart with our pledge, we've also added that to our schoolware. So people can purchase the little leopard heart as well. But yes, two of our students created these pictures. So.
My previous fourth graders.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Allen Road Elementary School is, you're up. Thank you. Okay, Allen Road Elementary School is, you're up. Thank you.
I'm Emily LaFountain. I'm the building principal. Tonight, I have Rachel Kramer, our school psychologist, Ayana Richmond, our instructional coach, and Renee Marula, a special education teacher and our B P T chair. Our building demographics, we have three hundred and thirty students this year, which is an increase of fifteen students. We have seventy-one total staff members, which is an increase of two. We have an embedded social worker for our special class program, and we received point-five A I S and point-five instructional coach, which we equated to one full-time position. We have five C T D classrooms, zero change in the staffing. But this year, instead of a K-three split, we did a first and second based on student enrollment. We have three special classrooms, special class classrooms. And our students who receive free and reduced lunch stayed the same at thirty-seven percent from last year to this year. Thirty-six students in, forty-seven students out. I'll give everyone a minute to look at our our vision.
All right, so as part of the district strategic plan, graduation rate is first on there. At Allen, we're really hoping to focus on graduation rate by looking at attendance. In particular, we want to decrease our chronic absenteeism. Some of the strategies we're looking to use to address that is re-engaging families using preferred methods of communication. That looks like utilizing Parents Square to get in touch with parents, really looking at attendance data every couple of weeks to monitor and implement interventions using our social workers, Access, Liberty Resources, and Promise Zone. This is also a standing agenda item at grade-level meetings weekly, as well as our building planning team. Our wonderful administrator, Emily LaFountain, also has been communicating the importance of attendance to families, whether that is via Parents Square or at open house. And additionally, we're able to make those home visits as appropriate.
So in terms of, excuse me, reading proficiency, we're looking to increase our Ames Web Total Composite Reading Scores by five percent, coming from fall of two thousand twenty-one at thirty-three percent and ending last year at forty-five point four. Our goal is to then increase to fifty-point-four percent this year in spring. And our strategy to do that include implementing the Amplify C K L A program and the Common Assessments therein, and, as Emily mentioned, increasing our point-five A I S and point-five instructional coach, which brings us to two and a half A I S interventionists and one full-time instructional coach. And we're able to utilize our special area teachers into our win blocks now so they can help with our, what I need now, our win-building-wide intervention based on student data. We're utilizing interventions and progress monitoring with our interventionists and our student support team to collaborate and goal-set for students in areas of need and the whole M T S S process. And this graph just illustrates our fall, spring, and goal data, looking for, again, that five percent year-over-year from fall, I'm sorry, from spring of two thousand twenty-two to this spring of two thousand twenty-three.
And for our third strategic plan goal, we're focusing on that emotional competency piece and really focusing on building relationships. So we're hoping by the end of the year to decrease our BIMAS two social concern data. And the BIMAS two is just a teacher rating scale. Every student gets rated, and the social concern is made up of social skills as well as communication skills. Some of the strategies we're looking to use to help us meet the goal looks like employing different restorative practices and building our school community. That might look like daily personalized greetings when students come in, two-by-tens, or check-in, check-out. We're also really looking to implement evidence-based programs and interventions such as Zones of Regulation, therapeutic crisis intervention for schools, as well as Second Step. We also have monthly meetings for students at risk, as well as mindful moments for staff. And here's just a visual kind of showing where we were last year versus where we'd like to be by the end of the school year this year.
In terms of our math proficiency, we're also looking to have a five percent year-over-year from the spring. So starting last year, beginning of the year at twenty-five point four percent, and then growing to forty-six point two percent proficiency at our tier-one level for math. And our goal is to be at fifty-one point two percent at the end of this school year. Our strategies for that are utilizing our instructional coach, our A I S teachers, and our instructional TAs to implement the interventions and to monitor the progress that we're having throughout the year. We're able to utilize our K-four win intervention blocks and increase our math intervention blocks to match student data, our A I S blocks, to match our student data where we can. Utilizing the S S T process to monitor students' response to intervention and our building-wide observations and walkthroughs to enhance practices within the classroom, and continuing our Intu Math Tier-One program, as well as the Common Assessments included with that. And again, our data from fall last year at twenty-five point four percent, looking to a goal this year of fifty-one point two.
And you can see from some of the pictures, we've had some celebration this year. We've welcomed the students back. We've come together as a building to cheer on the riders for missing children. And always, we have support and smiles at Allen Road. We've also had challenges. We have class-size issues. We have a split C T D teacher. And we have issues with managing instructional time and transportation. And we'd like to thank you for listening to our presentation.
And at this time, I'd like everyone to recognize the Allen Road staff who put very hard work into this presentation and sort of open up if there are any questions.
Okay, questions, comments?
Yes, I have. You're gonna call me like Bob Junior here. It's what's gonna happen. First of all, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. It's nice to know what's going on. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions regarding... And this was just based on my experience when I had some special-class kiddos in my building. How much time does that take? With, you have three special programs that are high-needs kids with emotional difficulties. How much time do you spend? I mean, I could say putting out fires, but dealing with kids, helping them regulate their emotions, helping them be safe. How much time does the administrator put in, the psychologists, and the social worker dealing with that, like just a guesstimate?
So that's a loaded question for September. In terms of, we always spend a lot of time assisting students getting acclimated from the summer to September. However, I would say every day, from the administrator perspective, we are supporting students on the hour, by the hour, multiple times a day, obviously with the hope to decrease the amount of support needed, but giving what's requested or desired at the time and really trying to problem-solve and shift and work because it's an all-hands-on-deck approach. So I'll let the psychologist speak, but I'll give the entire staff a shout-out because we've actually come up with terms like "all set" because everyone is starting to build connections with students. So people are desperately trying to help when someone's presenting is not ready, whether it's asking a staff member if they can switch out or asking if they can help the student to the point where sometimes their students are being offered way more support than they're ready to receive. They just need time and space. So I'll pass it to Rachel.
I think certainly it varies day by day, just in terms of, you know, how much of our day is spent with some of our special-class population. We are lucky enough that we do have a social worker embedded within the program. But just to be frank, it does take up a lot of my day. I'm always here for the kids, and that's always first and foremost what I'm dedicated to. I'll give up my lunch. I'll give up my planning. I will do whatever I need. If I'm staying late, I need to call parents. It is difficult with time management with an embedded social worker, with a building social worker. We're just, you know, doing our best right now.
I compare, when I used to work with the old Cassin Road, Bob, that you know there, and I compared like the wraparound services they had. And then, like within my building, where we had like some kiddos that were... I mean, I will tell you, I had about like one year, like three kiddos that it was like one percent of my building took up about ninety-five percent of my time. So I guess I'm equating to, you know, I hear the skate program, they're self-sufficient. They're, you know, it's not... I just, and I know, Dan, we started to talk about that at one point, is what does Bosie's have or what is Bosie's doing where that's not how it is for us? Like, they had a whole building full of just eight-one-one programs. And I think it's great that they're all together because for the kids, you know, "Oh, this building does it this year, and now this year, this building." So you got it all together, and that's great. But I just wonder, when I look at, you know, especially after like working with some of the talent, not that you don't have talented people now, but what is it that we could learn from them? And then I wonder, like, within a building setting, is there enough supports the same as what Bosie's have? And I think not. I think Bosie's has more. So I think that's reason why. I mean, I just, I know in my building, there was a lot of staff burnout. There was a lot of, we would call it tapping out. There was a lot of, I mean, I would tell you, I was right there. I mean, but so that's, I'm kind of coming to you with that perspective in mind and just...
So each year, we evaluate the staff needed, the students' needs that are posed. And this year, I'm extremely grateful and excited to announce we're working with Liberty Onsite. So we have up to fifteen students who can receive direct services here. Ms. Richmond is assisting us with working with Paws, so we're going to be getting a therapy dog in the building to have students read to. If I had it my way, we would have a shelter and have every day, but we'll start with a two days and continue it to expand from there. But overall, I think it's courageous conversations like this and tapping into any community resource to make sure we have the best training, the best staff, and the ability to work with one another to identify when we need to tap out or who might be best served in a certain role with a student based on relationship. So we evaluate it daily, weekly, monthly, and even with the assistance of Dr. Leahy, Mr. Stone, Julie Dormody, our new director. We have multiple meetings just to talk about social, emotional needs and academic needs as well. So I don't think there's ever a perfect answer, but I can tell you that with this team, with this district, we always have opportunities to do better, be better, and learn. So I don't want to overshadow the staff, but if there's anything else additional you'd like to add or anything I might have missed, feel free.
Julie, you're lucky, we're lucky, this district, she was the principal of Crown Road last year, and that's the kind of school that Beth is talking about. Tomorrow night is open house. I know the kids will not be there, but from five-thirty to seven-thirty, Beth, if you're available, I don't know what your schedule is, they would be willing to talk to you. I do know staff is a lot larger in that building. You know, because of the kind of child they're working with, and it's the same type of child that you're working with, that there are plenty of teaching assistants, and they have rooms. I know Dan's been looking at this, the type of room that we take the children in. I was down in Cortlandville to see the... Every classroom has something over the lights because it's proven that, you know, we're looking at economy, lights and stuff, but softness. I mean, there's a lot of things that probably we could look at for that type of child. And if you just want to take a trip tomorrow through that, you would see that, the type of classrooms and what the setup is. It's a lot different than our classrooms.
Other questions?
I don't have any questions from just comments, two comments. Is that Allen Road is really a true neighborhood school? Matt Herman, did you go there, Matt, at all? Yeah, he's a former student there, and I live across the street. And I'm loving hearing the kids at noon or in the afternoon. You can hear the excitement, much different than it was in the past. But I want people to realize that socioeconomics has changed in that area, in that neighborhood. It's not what it was when I first started teaching in the school district. And I know Don's talked about that school next year, looking at lunches and breakfasts and so forth. But to go along with that class you talked about, when I went over there, just when the bicycle things were going, Matt Irwin had this gentleman, I believe he was a security guard. He's now a teaching assistant in your building, and he loves that classroom. He loves that kind of child. I would say, I don't know how he's doing in there, I think, but he has a smile on his face. He said, "You know, Mr. Crabtree, I really love this job." He loves working with those kids, so.
Okay, thank you.
Very quick comment. Kudos to bringing positive Central New York into the schools. The dogs really do. I had a therapy dog of my own that I used to bring into the schools, and it makes such an impact, especially when you have a child that's terrified of a dog. I had my little Gemma was twenty-eight pounds and would turn a kid around from being terrified to actually took the fear away. So just little moments like that that you don't know are gonna happen. It's very impactful. So good job getting that done.
Hey, I guess, thank you very much. All right, this is the moment for comments from the audience. We don't have anybody signed up today, but I just want to mention that it is the practice of this school district and this Board of Education to welcome comments from the public. So if you're out there listening, you can contact our district clerk to sign up to come in, or you can also just send us a letter and email, whatever, through our district clerk, and they'll make sure all the board members receive that. Thank you. And we'll move on to Board of Education reports, and I'm going to ask Mr. Thorne, Chair of Policy Committee, to tell us what we have.
Thank you, Paul. Policy Committee met last Tuesday, resulting in the addition of three policies to tonight's agenda for Board adoption. And our next meeting will be on the fifteenth of November.
Okay, thank you very much. Legislative Committee did meet, Mr. Crabtree.
All right, our first meeting was October fifth, and Don went through the American Rescue Plan and our Relief and Supplemental Plan to show our committee how we're using the funds. We talked about all the topics that we would like to talk about. We have a new member. He's visited for the first time, is Jeremy Bellfield, is Superintendent Lafayette, and he has a lot of background in legislation, federal and state and local. So I've asked him to do a short presentation on what he feels is important. And I am gonna send Matt Irwin and Don an email. I'd like to have a little presentation on safety, what we have done in the past. Since we have Mr. Sterpy, Ms. May, Rachel May, and John Mannion, and Ms. Hunter, send some people so that I want them to know what we have done in safety. So the date is November second. It's virtual. It's from five to six. If you're not able to do it, I can get somebody else and do some. But safety was something that I know Phil Clary brought up in the committee that he liked to see, and I think the committee would like to see it. And our next meeting, as I said, is November second.
Okay, thank you very much. Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. This past Friday and Saturday morning, spent some time in Albany with many other superintendents and union leaders around the state, learning about community schools and the impact and what can be done to help implement a community school in our district. So it was very informative. So, it was very informative, and I'll be providing you more information to follow. I do want to give a shout-out and clearly recognize our marching band is number one in the state. That is an incredible feat, and a lot of hard work has gone into accomplishing this. I did get to see them perform the Starburst. I think, Mr. Crabtree, you were there. And again, they get better every single week. So, number one in the state is, is huge. We did have our first Parents Advisory Committee this past Wednesday. It was great to be back in person. Most of those meetings were virtual for the last two years. Opportunity to share concerns and have, it was just a great dialogue in the room. So, it was great to have that meeting again. Many other things are going on as far as our, our teams. Field hockey, number-one seed will face the winner of Liverpool in FM Sunday. Looks like boys soccer will play Beville at Bragman Stadium. Girls soccer will play the winner of Syracuse in FM on Wednesday, February, sorry, October 26. Boys volleyball is number-one seed, they are 13-2. Football will play Proctor Saturday. If things go well, they will still be the number-two seed going into sectionals. So, I can't say enough about all of our, our programs that our students are involved with. As far as their extracurricular activities, they are definitely representing the district well. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Education comments, I have a few, but if somebody wants to, no, I'll go, I'll go first. Just a reminder, and I'll, and I'll get on an email, we have a retreat, the board, scheduled for Monday. I did receive a communication from Matt Cook with Mr. Bowles also. On the agenda, I will kind of get that out to everybody before the end of this week. I know everybody can't make it, I know you had a conflict, and I'm sorry, but, oh, well, you're welcome to be there. I know that that was, there was one conflict. But yes, that is going to be in Liverpool at the BOSI's headquarters on Elwood Davis Road. It's, I really call it Seventh North Street, but it's that road there behind Denny's. Denny's. The, I sent out an email through the automated system with the self-evaluation of the board. If you receive one of those, we're still waiting for yours. I'd like to get those collated, which that'll do for me, so I could send them out to everybody to take a look at. Probably have a brief period to comment on that, if there was any comments on what we saw there. But he was looking at a, like, a 4:00 to 4:30 kind of meeting greet, and then we were gonna start at 4:30. I told him 4:30 is what I had communicated here. So, I don't want to stress anybody out who has work, and if you have trouble getting there, we'll start when we get everybody there and ready. Any questions about that? Any, any other board comments? Yes, sir.
I work all day on this, no. First of all, I'm driving down Bear Road, I think it was Saturday, and I saw the sign, Carl W. Siley, Bear Road Elementary. I did a U-turn, thank God there wasn't a policeman there. And I pulled in, I took a picture, and I sent it to Matt. And Matt was on a, on a, on a conference somewhere, and I sent it to, and I, and I forgot you were on a conference. So exciting to see that sign. And I didn't go to the Bear Road retirement luncheon today, but I am sure, and there's lights on it. I mean, it changes if the orange are in town, it's orange and blue and green. Thank you. It means a lot to me personally, and to people that worked with a man for 40 years. It's gorgeous. Please drive by, but don't do what I did. I had a chance to go up to CNS. I haven't been up there a lot, and I got a chance to go up on Activity Day, and that's the day where all the clubs are in a room. And during the lunches, the students have a chance to come and, and join a club. And, and I'm doing a club up there with somebody else, but there's this club, and I know you, you would want to know this. And it's Mrs. Cooliard is the advisor. And it is a club of students. It's called Productive Actions for Change. It deals with suicide. And it's a club that is going into our elementary schools. And it was so uppity, they had videos going, and they're working with young people to make them feel good about themselves. You, I mean, this is just wonderful. She's a wonderful social worker, but this club, and I just picked up the card, and I wanted to share the quote, "Just when the caterpillar thought the world was over, became a butterfly." So, I'm really, I'm really excited about this club. I know Canteen was there, and there were other clubs. The drone was going around, thank God it was in a net, you know, it was in a net. But the kids are so excited. And I was working with a candidate yesterday, and it ran into two high school teachers who were doing their Sunday walk, and they said, "It's wonderful up there." The teachers are excited about learning with the students, and the students are just uppity. And I felt it that day. There's been a change, and I just think that's a great thing for our school district. And then I just want to make a paid political thing. Election is coming up, and I'll be very down the middle on this. But I want each of the board members to really look at each of the candidates, because there are some candidates that don't feel we are doing our job as board members, and they're coming out and saying it publicly. And starting with the governor, down through our Assembly and our Senate, so please, please vote. Early voting starts next week, because it's going to affect our schools. It's definitely gonna affect the schools. This is a group of people that Paul has talked about. They're mainly in Western New York. They have billboards in Western New York, but they're moving into this area. And we need to be careful. We may disagree on gun control or whatever, but education is something we really need to look at, and who our leaders are going to be. So, I hope I went down the middle on that. But this is an important election. That's why I say, there's gonna be a lot of people here on Election Day. I feel this is gonna be one of the largest midterm people coming out to vote. So, I just want people to look carefully and read carefully. What you see on political ads is not necessarily the truth. Thank you.
I think that was fine down the middle, that last statement, that what you see is not necessarily the truth. I know, isn't that amazing, though? But it's true, I think. Right, we're gonna move to routine action items, and I'm going to ask for a motion to consider the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger, or any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Pose, and that is carried. Thank you very much. I'd like a motion to place items B, C, and D together, the classification of the disabled students for the various placements in school, homeschool and preschool. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Segrew. B, C, and D are before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Thank you. Acknowledgement of Business Office reports for July and August of '22. Motion to place that before us, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. Thank you very much. We have an amend, amend the appointment of our school physicians. Discussion action items A, A, action item A, if I could have a motion placed that before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. Item B, a motion placed that before us, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. This is our seeker resolution, the environmental impact piece, and it is a roll-call vote. So, that is before us. Any discussion before the vote? Questions? Seeing none, yes. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that is carried unanimously, and we have Resolution C, is authorize propositions of special meeting for December 6th. And that was explained to us earlier, and I believe the hearing is in there also for the date of the 29th. Motion placed that before us, Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a roll-call vote also. I mean, sorry, question? Okay, I saw, saw you. All right, yes. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is carried unanimously. If I could, I'd like a motion to place both D and E together. These are the resolutions for our School Resource Officers. Contract with the Town of Cicero, and the contract with the Andau County Sheriff's. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Those two are before us at this time, is there, are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, those items are carried, thank you. F, please, recommendation increase food service substitute pay, motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. And G, recommendation to abolish 1.0 FTE communications network analysts and create 1.0 FTE network administrator. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Declaration of marketable, non-marketable surplus, motion, please, placed that before us. Motion from Ms. Segrew, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. Motion for policies, I'll probably ask to place I, J, and K together. Could I have a motion for that? Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Segrew. We have our three policies that Chair, Chairman Thorne placed before us today and discussed earlier in the reports. Any questions, comments? Yes?
I got a couple comments and/or questions regarding the policy on physical restraint of students and use of timeout rooms. Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the policy, and one, do we have, do lawyers, do our district lawyers, like, get involved in this and, like, look at the policy to make sure that we're covered legally should anything happen?
We always have them review our policies.
Okay, all right. I guess what I'm looking at is, is there a standard form in each building of when an emergency intervention is used for a student? That the documentation is there?
That was one of the discussion items that we talked about at the policy, and that standard form is being developed and created as we speak.
All right, not to be, not to be a micromanager, we have one for our district that I'll share with you. If it, if it helps, doesn't have to, but if it helps, it might be, I like to share the wealth if I can without being overstepping anywhere, okay?
Sure.
All right.
Share it with our chair, too, because, when you, you're gonna email it?
Share what?
With the chair also, just if you're sending.
He's the chair of policy.
Oh, okay, yep, I'll do that. I'll share, I'll share with both of you, thank you.
Okay. So, those three are before us. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Pose, those are carried, thank you very much. Retirement, we have one retirement to acknowledge. It is Valerie Priolo, school bus attendant with 22.4 years of service. So, I thank her, and I wish her a long and healthy retirement that's in effect in January. Personnel report, instructional personnel report, A, if we could have someone make a motion placed that before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne, that is before us. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried, and sports staff personnel report, B, motion to put that before us. Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. At this time, we do not have a request for an executive session unless there is a motion, the appropriate motion that any board member would like to make for executive session on an appropriate topic. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Segrew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, we are adjourned. I have 7:44, thank you.